All right. Good morning. It's June 20th. This is the Watcom County Fire District 21 Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, and I will go ahead and call the meeting to order at 10:31, and we'll start with allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
All right, roll call. Bruce Ansel.
Matt Reber.
Scott Fisher.
Any public comment? All right, I'll open the Volunteer Pension Board meeting at 10:32. We have the May 16th minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Any discussion? All in favor? unanimous. Pension eligibility settlement, chief?
Sir, Mr. Robert De Meyer, who was a District 3 volunteer from 1989 to 1999, has submitted his paperwork about an retirement settlement from this Board of Volunteer Firefighters.
So, from 99 till now, what happened?
19, so 1989 to 1999, that's the period he served.
Right.
You have to hit us.
Yes, he got to hit us, yeah.
So to get his qualification. Gotcha. All right, so the amount is $3,824.35, and that comes from the state.
Correct.
Is there a motion to approve the settlement? All right, any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor? unanimous. Thank you. Any other business for the pension board? Chief? Okay, that said, I'll adjourn the pension board meeting and open the regular Board of Commissioners' meeting at 10:33. We have the consent agenda, which is the April 18th meeting minute, staff reports, financial reports. Sorry, up here it says April. My bad.
May.
No, I appreciate it. I caught that earlier, but.
It's on your other, yeah.
That's all right. Thank you. The May 16th minutes. So I'll read the numbers in for the revenues, expenditures. May was $1,484,717.32. Expenditures for June, $967,929.38. Direct deposit payroll, $443,312.16. Payroll taxes, voucher, $108,029.33. Benefits voucher, $284,133.83. Monthly expenditure voucher, $96,152.35. Capital projects, $36,301.71. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Any discussion? All in favor? unanimous. Commissioner, any reports? Anyone?
Yeah, I guess I can go first. I've got a radio show that's going to have the chief on it here upcoming next month. So him, District 1 and District 17 are going to participate in that. So that's all set and ready to go. What else have we got going on?
I don't know. County Commissioners' thing?
Nope, didn't go. Turned that over to Matt. This wasn't that quick.
That was back from May, and that was during my otherwise indisposed time. So I'm now.
Feel free and let me know, and I'll go if you can.
Pausable.
That's all I got.
All right, Kimberley?
Just do it again, if you want levy to live.
Okay. Counsel, did you attend counsel, or was that a non?
There was nothing on the thing for us.
Okay.
Although they did pass their parking lot, or their.
Parking ordinance?
They did their parking, yeah.
Reducing the size of, or the amount of parking for residents. Yeah. Also fewer parking spaces.
They also are moving forward, my understanding is, with the trailer home developments?
Yes, theirs, yeah. Mobile home park.
Can we establish more fire lane zones when they start messing with the downtown access to the buildings?
I'll be reviewing all the access for fire apparatus for each project that comes up.
Excellent. We have another meeting with Liz Loomis and Associates. Moving forward, there's a lot of information rolling out. Gosh, we have how many meetings? Five, I think.
Five or six.
Meetings. We've got one on the east side. We've got Birch Bay Village. We've got one here at 61. We've got one at 63, and.
Senior Center.
Oh, Senior Center. So the manager of Birch Bay Village has been super cooperative. That's probably at least 1,000 resident homes in there. They're going to host a time for us at their clubhouse, and they have a regular newsletter, and he's already pushed out our video. And Pete from the Senior Center, same way, he has a regular newsletter. I sent him that notice that was created, and I'm sure that's going to come out in their next newsletter. He's, I believe, also on the Blaine Chamber. So we're touching a lot of the Blaine-Birch Bay Semiamu area. I don't know.
I'm going to be reaching out to the Semiamu, the SRA, as well as the men's group, and see if we can do. They had both talked about doing a mid-July.
Right.
A mid-July update, so.
So we're down to less than 30 days before ballots draw.
Yep, that's the, that's the east side one there, Saturday, the 27th.
Where is that one?
It's at the Laurel Grange on the guide. It's going to be on the east side there.
We get the sign moved down to the Grange, broadcast them that, then?
We'd have to ask them about that, but we are, after the, after we pass June 27th, we'll put the date of the July 27th meeting. I, you asked me yesterday, and I thought about it. I'm like, no, we're not putting any date on there until after we pass the previous month's date, so not to confuse people. But we, maybe if you could have.
That's what I was talking about, is getting the sign up to not moved, but.
And there, there, I think July 1, all the news.
Yes, everything, all the news stuff drops on the first.
The date announcements and everything for, for all these meetings will be pushed out to all the newspapers, and there's a long list of, of community contacts and radio stations and all that, where those, notice of those dates will come out. Actually, can, Jenny, can we send, I mean, I know they're, they're drafts, but they've been approved. Can we send those to the board so that everyone can see kind of what's been going on behind the scenes for scheduling all the meetings?
You mean send the notices, the ones?
The one that Suzanne.
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
I'd like to get a copy of the heating data.
Yes, that's what this will be. It'll, it'll list, with the exception of Birch Bay Village, because it's a private gated community, and so, I mean, you can't really invite the public to it out.
And the local has something going in mid-July, I'm sure they'll talk about it as well, so.
All right. So we're kind of on the final, final approach. Has anyone had or heard any negative comments regarding the levy?
I've just heard concerns endemic to my area about increasing costs, the evaluation of homes popping up. Same conversation, same conversation that's been had several times. But I also think people in general are supportive of emergency response services.
That's the difficult message, is to try to help people understand that the levy rate has very little to do with their property value reassessment. In fact, in most cases, they pay less.
The good news is that the word is definitely out there.
Good. All right, excellent. All right, local 106.
A few things. Yeah, obviously the levy, we're geared up with that. We have a campaign manager do the IFF, so the focus is going to be on social media and like YouTube ads and stuff, so we're going to spend the majority of our money on that first, and then literature for door knocking, and we're starting to get all that set up. And whatever's left over, we will start using signs, or targeted area for signs. We just finished the Italian chief promotional, so congrats to all those who passed. So that's official now, I think, as of the 18th. We're doing a pancake feed at Station 61 on July 13th, to obviously help out with the levy lift, and then obviously Leslie Smith Memorial is on the 29th. I'll chief send an email, but there is a private after gathering at Ishka's Pub from 3 to 6, so you guys are welcome to join. So all the, all the fire, fire family.
I'm sorry, you said that last part?
Private gathering after the memorial at Ishka's Pub in Bellam from 3 to 6. The odd chief, if you don't mind sending something out about that, that'd be good. Thank you.
Do you need help with the pancake breakfast?
I mean, Cody Bowen's running it, so he's sent some stuff. I also imagine that, yeah, it's always good to have more hands than not, so he's the one who's in charge of it.
Thank you. Unfinished business. Birch Bay Station 63, Phase 1 project, chief?
So in my chief's report, I discussed the, the push to move to a different, what do they call it, alternative public work. kind of push to move to a different, what do they call it, alternative public works process? And that is out of an abundance of caution, as we've, as we've talked about building and the complexity of it, and looking at, the initial plan was to, as we, we know that Station sixty-three is gonna be a teardown, the plan is to use the same property. The, the initial plan was to relocate the Station sixty-three crew to Station sixty-two. As I dug further into that, that's a bad decision for, for me to make. Uh, that crew needs to stay at sixty-three. It, with the number of critical calls that they respond to from that station, the effect on response time would be catastrophic. Uh, and if it's even for one person, then it's not worth it. We have to, we have to maintain the crew at that location throughout the project. So, and looking at that, how sixty-three, the lot is so small, and how are we gonna do that? It's gonna require housing and apparatus, how, how, housing for personnel and apparatus. And there's a high likelihood during the project that's gonna have to be moved from one side of the property to another, that's gonna be complex. Um, we had spoken before about getting a project manager, that led further down the rabbit hole of, how can we do this in one fell swoop and have reasonable expectations for how this project's gonna turn out, uh, going into it and coming out? And so that led me to, uh, have some conversations with people. One of them was obviously our legal counsel, um, with some contractors, and then just do, just doing research online, led me to this GCCM contracting model, which is where what you do is you, uh, you have to apply to the state, you put a package in, um, there's a board at the state that approves the project, and it's based on six different criteria. Uh, two of them that mattered the most to us and the fire service are the need for the facility to stay open or operational during the construction, and also the complexity of the project, meaning both the fire station and the fact that refers back to, to point number one of having to stay in, in, in operational mode during, during construction. So what this does is it allows you to identify the architect, and then find the contractor before the design is complete. A, uh, there's essentially a project manager then assigned, um, by the, or approved by the state that manages, that helps you manage both of those entities, so that what the architect puts out as a drawing is agreed to by the general before it ever goes out, like, before we approve it, the general's saying, yes, I can build this, and I can build this within budget, as opposed to a drawing, and then a contractor saying, yeah, I can do this for this, coming in low bid, but I gotta do all these change orders to make this happen. It, um, it's been a proven way in the state of Washington to keep costs. They, they hesitantly use the word down, but that, more that costs are known from the beginning to the end of the project, and those numbers match, as opposed to saying, we're gonna build it for seven million, in the end it costs you twelve, because of the contractor came in after the design. This starts the contractor and, and the designer working together from the beginning. It also makes sure, um, that you're, that it's being done correctly, uh, insofar as all the safety and health things are put in, so when you say it's a firehouse, or it's a fire station, the state board mandates basically that, okay, so it needs, it needs to have all the things that go into a fire station, not a contractor that's never built a fire station saying, oh yeah, I can do that, I can do that. This pro, this process has been used with great success by school districts, is the big one, and also public utility districts. They're the main users of it, the fire service is starting to crack into it and get into it, so we kinda be, we wouldn't be a guinea pig, but we'd be one of the first dozen to do it. And the more I've researched it, and then Commissioner Ansel was present at a meeting with our attorney, and I, I truly feel like without institutional knowledge in the command staff of how to build a fire station, this is the safest and most responsible way for us to do this. Um, I recognize that it does, it doesn't delay us anymore, it's just gonna slow the process down a little bit and bring hopefully clarity and confidence to all of us that we're getting it done right the first time, and that we're not just shooting from the hip, and, and then end up with either a Taj Mahal, or we overpay for something that's not the right thing. So that, there's, I'm not asking you to take any action today, the, the biggest thing is, is I've reached out to, um, Mr. Davis, gave you the name of a consultant that will help usher us through. Uh, when he talked about this application to the state board, I kinda melted in my seat. He said, no, 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 there's a consultant that will help you get through this state board, this state board application. We're preparing that application for submittal in August, to go before the state board in September. The answer from the state board is immediate that day, so there's no waiting for an answer. If you don't, if the state board says no, they don't just say no, and, and you have an impossible target to find. They say, no, we need these things clarified, you come back to the next meeting, and you get clarified. The firm that I discussed it with would not, they won't take us on unless they have a reasonable expectation of success. The guy is very confident that, he's like, yeah, this is, he didn't say slam dunk, but that's the word I'll use. So, it's, um, it's a company called Han Line Consulting. They've done numerous huge, large projects. Um, one of their key ones would be, um, the Bellevue City Hall, overall, the, um, the new Bellevue City Hall that was built in twenty-twenty-two, um, which they did under this model, so it's, they've, they've got a, a record of success.
Didn't they just do the Gold Bar Fire Station not too long ago as well?
I think they're helping with that, they're helping salvage that, yes. Because that was, that was a traditional process that went bad.
This is all under the assumption that we're still using the land that the station's on?
On the, and even if we weren't, I'm.
Process remains the same?
I feel like the process should remain the same, just based on, like I said, institutional knowledge and what, what we know about building fire stations, and I, I think this keeps us more transparent. We're having an ex, I mean, I realize it's still government, but we're having an external entity audit our process as we go through. Maybe, it may seem like an abundance of caution, but I think that's, we only get one shot to do this, and, um, yeah, I, I think it's super important that we, I'll slow it down, but then we take the time to make sure we do it right, both for our people internal and for our external customers, the taxpayers, so that they, we end up with, with a reasonable building that will serve for another fifty to seventy years.
And it's still planned with a modular mindset for growth and expansion, none of that changes, right?
Right, oh yeah, and that was one of the things that we, not modular like buildings, but, but add a, we, that the structure could be added to, or that it could be upgraded, yes, that the, the things, you know, we look at technology that's coming and, and build those pieces into it, maybe so we don't have it from day one, but that it, it's, it's upgradable.
So that the frame hasn't changed, the frame structure hasn't.
Correct. Correct, and that it, and that it plans for growth, that we're not building it for today, we're building it for twenty years from now.
Back up a little bit.
Yes.
What's the response time from Semiamu to Birch Bay, seven, eight minutes?
It adds an additional eight minutes. So. Sorry, that was it.
So I, I was at the meeting with the attorney on this, and, and of course, my biggest concern was initially hearing that the GCCM project could, there's a queue, so, and everybody applies, and then you get put in the hopper, and we didn't know if it was gonna be months, years, or whatever, and then finding out now that we could get a meeting in September is huge. The, the next point being, we don't have the staff to manage a project like this, so whatever we do, whether it's hiring a contractor, consultant, whomever, it's not something Jason or our existing staff have the time or ability, or no offense, the knowledge, uh, to do. And one of my biggest fears with a project like this is having to do the conventional, uh, design build, which the chief talked about, meaning, you know, you have a, a picture on a napkin of what a fire station looks like, and you send it out for bid, and you get, the lowest bidder is what you're stuck with by statute. And it could be someone who's never seen a fire station, um, and the horror stories of people getting all these change orders, or getting a partly-built project that ends up not incorporating all of the needs of, of a fire station, uh, as far as the safety and health components. And then, oh, we gotta, we need another million, and then we need another million, and pretty soon your, your low bidder is the most unqualified contractor that has cost you more in the long run, because we are not allowed to pick the best contractor under that model. So, I think if we can qualify, the GCCM model would allow us to vet contractors and, and look at their background, and their history, and their abilities. And as, as you pointed out once before, Kimberly, we, we would really like to keep our tax dollars within our tax base. I, I'm, I know there's really good people in Federal Way, and Kent, and Seattle, but I think there's probably some in Bellingham and Linden and Beringham, so I would love for us to be able to choose somebody who is willing to use local resources. Plus, it cuts down on the cost, because we're not paying three hundred dollars an hour to drive from Federal Way to Birch Bay, so. Thank you, chief, for, um, researching that. Kimberly has put together a comparison spreadsheet, um, that talks about the, the three different projects. I, I'm assuming, chief, if, if we were picking either of these, it would either be the design build or the GCC.
Yes.
Or not the job order.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with the job order style.
For smaller projects?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think it's like a small work roster, maybe.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
From what, from what I read, so. So if, if you're reviewing this, I would say concentrate on the first two, the design build and the GCC, for reference. Okay, moving around, anybody, any other questions, comments on that project? So, just for a timeline, we're, we're, we're saying, okay, we have an architect that we have are looking at a phase one contract, which is kinda now on a back burner.
And that's one of my questions for the gentleman, the, from Han Line Consulting, is where, what do we need to do? Do we, do we do a full phase one contract with the architect? Do we do a letter of engagement? How do we move forward with them? And there's, there's, I suppose there's always the possibility they'll hear, I, I doubt it, but that we're going GCCM, and they'll punch out, and we'll have to do an RFP all over again. So, that's, that's always an option, but, um, I don't, I don't anticipate that, but.
Are you saying that based on cost consideration?
No, just, maybe that's not, they prefer to do the, the design build style, as opposed to, you know.
You know, they've got a lot of their contractors lined up, if you, when we looked at their proposal, and that's, you know, what Kimberly pointed out, was look, I mean, these people are all from King County, or Pierce County, or wherever, um, and maybe they have people up here, and we just weren't clear enough to say, pick people from up here, but. So, you're gonna talk with them, we'll figure out what happens with our current.
Right.
On our.
Current plan, yeah.
But the goal then is, is to apply for and hopefully, uh, get on the September.
Goal is August, is having that, the package submitted by August twenty-first, or whatever it is, and then to be on the September docket at the state. The C, it's called CPARB is the, I can't remember what it stands for, but that's the board.
And there's no way to move forward with any type of feasibility study or anything right now, I would assume, because it's all on hold, it's all tabled until.
I, I would be hesitant, yeah, I can certainly ask the, um, Mr. Davis and the gentleman from Han Line.
That, that to me at least, seems like something that could move things, that's something that will have to be done regardless.
Actually, uh, you know what, I'm, let me, uh, can I get back to you after the meeting? I think I have an email about that.
Yeah.
I talked with the gentleman, um, who put me in contact with somebody at the county who, who, but I can't recall the exact details right now. I think I have some, some good news on that.
Okay, I like good news.
All right.
All right, chief, Semiamu Station sixty-two project.
Okay, maybe more good news? Um, so permits are in, we're, we're good to go, we're ready to go, um, with the project at Station sixty-two. I am meeting with Bob loophole, the contractor, Monday afternoon, um, to discuss the, the final sub bids that came in. And we're, we're off and running. I, I know, I'm, I'm certain that there'll be some concern from, from maybe members of the board, as well as members of the department of why are we moving forward, doing anything at sixty-two if we're not gonna move people there? The bottom line is we need to stop the damage that's happening, and repair the damage that's happening, and make it as, this, this work needs to happen either way. And also, I remind people that on the levy, which I'm optimistic is gonna pass, that we talk about staffing Station sixty-two, so we need to start to prepare that for responders to be there. So this project needs to move forward. It's with the, the financial number that the board put on it, at two-hundred-and-fifty K. It's certainly a, a lot of money, but it's not, we're not dumping millions into this. And so we have, we have a limit that we're gonna work to, and Bob's aware of that, and we'll, we'll meet Monday and go over what his subs gave him, uh, as far as bids, and, um, move forward within those parameters, but we've gotta stop, we've gotta stop the damage that's happening to that building, um, if, if nothing else. So, that's.
And didn't we determine that this can use mitigation funds for its growth?
That I have not done yet, actually. That needs to go on my Jenny list.
I mean, it, it would seem to me that we are preparing a station for growth by.
Yeah.
Suggesting we're gonna place an additional unit there.
We've certainly.
And to, to, to make it habitable, that, you know, I'm no attorney, and I know there's all kinds of weird loopholes that you have to jump through, but my, my common sense mind, which gets me in trouble a lot, would say that this is the growth, and could be used, we could use mitigation, which we have, what, almost five hundred thousand in there?
Five hundred thousand in there, yes. Yep.
That would be something I would like to tap into if it's possible.
I will check on that and get back to you.
Any other unfinished business? New business, surplus vehicles, chief? Tell us about these vehicles.
For you is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero four. We've got, um, four vehicles that were, we would like to get rid of. Three of them are old expeditions, they're old staff cars, they're way beyond time to get them out of here, and then, uh, an old road rescue ambulance that we'd like to send to auctions. What's that?
Probably get those sold.
So, they're just, they're not, those expeditions especially are not in use, they have not been in use, they're just drains on maintenance and.
You made a couple phone calls?
We'll send them to auction, or, well.
See what, what's the best price we can get?
Yeah, what's the best price we can get?
I'm certain I could probably get the best price.
I'll talk to you after the meeting, okay?
Before us is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero four, um, declaring the following vehicle surplus. A two thousand and six Ford Expedition, another two thousand and six Ford Expedition, a third two thousand and six Ford Expedition. a third 2006 Ford Expedition, and a 1996 Ford road rescue ambulance. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Move to second it. Any questions, comments? We are going to, per resolution, dispose of the vehicles listed in accordance with all applicable statutes. So I will allow the chief, or suggest the chief and Mr. Crawford work together to find out what's the best price, right? All right, all in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. All right.
I did, I have a question related to the OSHA email that had been sent out to us, and the volunteer standards changing, standards in general changing from 1980 to now. I just didn't know if that was gonna affect us financially, or if there's anything that we would wanna provide input on.
As far as. Shoot, I have to go, I recall this.
The emergency response updates to OSHA standards?
Right.
Haven't been updated in some 44 years.
There is, there is some, there is some concerns that I've seen on message boards and, and conversations between chiefs, that there could be some financial impacts to that. I know some districts, especially those with part-time programs, are now enrolling, having to enroll volunteers or part-time people into the state retirement system, which obviously comes at a cost.
Yeah.
For both the employee and the employer. So that, yes, there is certainly, there is certainly a risk of that. We also can't do it without the tender group, so I don't know how.
That's what I was thinking about, I just didn't know if we had a type of position as an organization on getting on board early and voicing concerns.
I haven't seen anything come, usually something like that that could cause, that would have a massive impact to the district. We'll, we'll get an update from Schmellick, Sickin and Davis. You know, like, you need, you need to pay attention to this, you need to take action. I haven't seen anything come from them yet. It's mostly been chatter on, like, chief, chief boards, you know, nationwide. And it's where I'm seeing most of the concern come out, is out of the Northeast.
Okay.
Where these, you know, these huge volunteer departments. So I, I have not seen anything come specifically from legal counsel on that yet.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Correspondence. Prop formation. By the county executive for Emergency Medical Services Week. For the whole month.
It didn't say one thing about Firebase EMS, I'd like to point out.
Piece of paper that was.
All right. Any. Words of wisdom about the latest train derailment?
Uh, it sounds like it was a gap in a switch that caused it to slow roll over. There was no hazardous materials, nobody was injured, no property was damaged, other than railroad property. But my heart skipped a beat. All of ours did.
All right, let's hope we don't have any more. And it looks like Watkins County has approved Linden's annexation of the.
Forty acre.
Basically has no current value that we are receiving tax dollars from.
I believe it was $485 last year.
Okay, so not, not gonna change our bank account in any way, Chief. All right, and then we have the announcement for Wes Smith. And our news. Board meeting, July 18th, is everyone available for that?
Looks good.
Yeah.
Mr. Hansel?
Yes.
Could I go back to correspondence just real quick?
Yes.
I just would like to point out that we, from time to time, we get solicitations for patches, for, from patch traders. And this morning Jenny, Jenny received a patch request. She applied her politely, and received an absolutely disgusting abusive email back from the person. And I just wanted to make you aware, that's the kind of stuff that Jenny deals with. If it's once, it's too often. I'll be following up with the gentleman. But.
Send me the email, I'll follow up.
I, I just wanted to make you aware that, you know, we, we really value our employees, but there's, and it's not a local person, it's someone from the East Coast.
No, even better, let me follow up.
Anyway, I, I just wanted to make you aware, because I, I apologize to Jenny on behalf of. Call the gentleman, this person. But, uh, but yeah, and it, and it's not just Jenny, it's sometimes phone calls too, but, but that's, that kind of stuff happens, and just wanted you to be aware that that, that happens from time to time, so.
So do we have a policy?
We don't trade patches.
Okay. There you go. Fair enough. Sorry, Jenny.
Yeah. It was a shocker.
Yeah.
And, and I should say, we don't trade patches with adults. If you can tug at my heartstrings, sometimes the chief will make an exception for a, a child, or a disabled child, or something like that, you know, but for, for the most part, no, we don't. We have a policy that says, unless the chief says yes, it's no. And I'm firmly in the no on this one. But yeah, it was.
That's a bad, there, there are still a lot of disrespectful angry people. I encounter them daily on my bike rides. Next meeting, agenda items. We'll keep Station 63 and Station 62 on there. Anything else, let's see, July, I guess we, we'll have, hopefully. That'll be there. So ballots be dropped.
Friday. Is that a day or Friday?
Well, I think they, they nail them on the 17th, so no, I'll get mine on the 25th. I do have that. All right. Yeah, well, we'll still have commissioner meetings, so. Unless you want something specific. All right, we. Have a brief executive session. Joel, I'm sorry, is there anything that you want to add in your report? Nothing heard about parking issues. One sort of last question about building heights. Where, where are we in that?
There's no code that says they can't build above a certain height, pertaining to fire apparatus, aerial apparatus. You know, a good example is Seattle, you know, they've got buildings that are 60, 70 stories high. No ladder trucks in a reset high, just we have to put in other measures in the building, you know, increase the firewalls, add sprinklers, you know, things like that. Extra fire protection.
And, and can we, will we communicate with the city that three people on a five-story building is probably inadequate for a first alarm response?
Yes.
A structured fire?
Absolutely.
I don't know what the NFPA minimum standard is for. Some, somewhere in my mind, I thought the first alarm response was like 18 or something like that.
Yep.
But I know that a recent one, I think I was looking at in Seattle, had 75 firefighters on scene.
Right.
So. We'd have to take all of Watkins County.
But it would take all, yeah.
I, I just, I. This is something I can lose sleep over, with, with the city wanting to grow and get bigger, and never once in any of these discussions am I hearing, oh yeah, what about the fire department? Or emergency response? I mean, I was disappointed when you did your presentation on the levy lift lift, and, and it, it was like we were talking to the wall. I mean, I don't even think we got eye contact from them, and when it was done, there wasn't, there wasn't a question, a comment, or it was really disheartening. I mean, to have the fire chief standing up saying, we're really grossly understaffed, and they're like, thanks, have a nice night. So I, I don't know if we're not messaging well enough, or what, but. I was disappointed. Get off my soapbox. Executive session, next. Per RCW 42.30.110 subsection L subsection D is to review negotiations on the performance of publicly bid contracts when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased costs. Jenny, you can stay. We will go till 11:30 at the latest. All right, we are back on round of executive session. Um, there is no further business before the board except signing of documents, which will refer, um, after the adjournment meeting. They're motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Right.
Meeting adjourned 11:27.